Good evening, welcome to our regular meeting of Tuesday, December 5th of the Stillwater Planning Commission. First item for business is land use for discussion and possible action. Fountain Square Group LLC Preliminary Platte, PZ-17-2247. Requesting review and approval of a preliminary platte of Fountain Square to create seven lots and two outlots on a portion of property addressed as 1409 Southwestern Road in the CS Commercial Shopping and A Agricultural Zoning District. Good evening.
Good evening. Lance Gross with Development Services. The, let's see. The preliminary platte before you is located at 1409 Southwestern Road. Let's see, the purple boundary on the map indicates the subject site. The current zoning is CS Commercial Shopping along with A Agriculture. Zoning to the east and south is P Public. And to the north and west is RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family. The original Fountain Square Shopping Center was developed in 2004, which is located on the northern portion of this subject site. Street view is looking to the southeast and it shows the existing commercial shopping This street view is looking to the northeast. It shows the open space and also the detention facility. This is a view of the preliminary platte. The, there are basically seven lots with two outlots. The large lot over here is lot number one. Lot two through six are located right along here with the two outlots, both east and west of those lots. This is a view of the platte laid onto the aerial photo. It shows the detention facility with the lots. And the, let's see. There's an exception actually with this application. And it's, for these lots right here, these five, six, and seven don't have direct access to Western. So that's the exception that you guys will be voting on as well. The findings. A subdivision exception is required for this preliminary platte for three of the proposed lots to not have direct frontage on Western Road, but use a private shared access easement. The proposal meets the C3 Plan requirements. A portion of the platte is within the FEMA floodplain floodway. I'll try to answer any questions.
How far is from the cut, the new cut that they're proposing to the existing cut? Is there a distance requirement between those two to enter the facility there from the new one to the existing one?
The drive distance separation?
Tom Kooch, Development Services. This, before you, you may have seen something that shows a driveway. We haven't received any plans for the development of the site yet this time, but the distance between the two driveways would be sufficient via, as what they have proposed, is what they have shown.
Okay. So would they come back then later with that request when they do the plating and they would then do the cut and all that?
This is the preliminary platte, so they'll be coming back with the final platte to the city council. You won't actually be seeing it, I think. And the, then when they come in for building permits, we'll get a commercial use by right and that is distributed administratively. So as long as they don't need any rezonings or any further divisions of the property or changes to this preliminary platte, then we shouldn't be back to the Planning Commission with this.
Thank you very much. We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the item, please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. Here representing the owner group tonight. I was just gonna see if I can pull this, this one back up. Just a little bit more, so in our future proposed plans, we have an access drive proposed on this lot right here. This comes out to Western. And then they would also have a cross-access, so they would, we would access the existing parking lot through here. So we've got two different circulations there. And then everything in this kind of cross-hatched pattern is proposed to be a cross-access agreement. So all of these lots agree that there will be people traveling through their property. That's just gonna be a big parking lot out there. And so these three lots would have access through that private access agreement that will be in place. The reason why we're asking for this request is because this outlaw area right here is, currently has FEMA floodway on it, which the restrictions on that are much greater than floodplain. So we're not proposing to do any dirt work. We don't want to touch that triangle of land. And so that's why we've got the cross-access agreement. So we think we're meeting the intent and the code through that way. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the item? There being none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item, please step forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Susan Garson, I live at 1422 Southwestern, which I believe is across the street from this. I'm not speaking exactly in opposition, but I'm concerned with traffic. The traffic has grown a great deal on Western in the last several years. It's very difficult to get out of our driveway in the morning and afternoon, and I'm thinking this is gonna make it even worse. And I'm wondering what can be done to compensate for more traffic?
Well, I think that's probably something staff should address.
You can refer to staff, but there's really nothing that this board can address one way or the other.
I've been informed that a traffic study will be required when, what, 1,500 cars per day are, I guess it's increased, correct? Yep, Tom will, Tom will be like.
Sorry, the, a traffic study is required when a development reaches 1,500 cars per day. I do not know how much the existing Fountain Square is at or if it got to that number, but when they come in for the building permits for the additional development, then we'll have to review that and make sure that a traffic study is not required. Now, a traffic study doesn't necessarily mean that there would be any changes to the roadway necessary, but it could mean things like turn lanes and things like that. But if a development doesn't meet that threshold, then we don't require a traffic study.
Thank you very much. It's probably not within our province to handle the traffic issues, but at least now you know someone that you can speak to about that as well.
It's kind of dangerous. I mean, people pull out really fast and they do what they feel is oncoming traffic. So it could get worse. And I, you know, I mean, we're in a residential, it's a residential area for us.
I could expand on Western Road in particular. Give this my help. Western Road in particular, right now it's four lanes from 19th Avenue to 12th Avenue and then drops down to two lanes past that point. But that corridor is identified in our transportation plan as being appropriate for, in our land use plan as being appropriate for commercial uses and then in the transportation plan as having a need for enhancements, especially north of 12th Avenue. But if, say, both sides of this area were to develop in a manner similar to, to where both sides were intensely developed, then, you know, things like a center turn lane and things like that to handle turning movements would be, become appropriate. But, I don't know if that helps.
Would anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this matter? There being none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff alternatives.
The alternatives are: Grant the exception request and approve the platte as presented. Find the platte is not in conformance with codes. Specify deficiencies and table the item. Or table the item to a certain date.
All right, thank you very much. Additional questions for staff or any discussion among commissioners?
I'd be willing to make a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay. I'd make a motion to accept findings and approve the proposed preliminary platte as presented and grant the subdivision exception request.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to accept the staff recommendations. I will vote. The motion prevails four to zero. The motion passes. Four to zero.
I have forgotten to take Ms. Tillman Brown to vote. I will do that now.
That's okay. She was just wondering who the fifth person was.
She'll pass.
Passes. All right. We'll now move to land use item for discussion and possible action. Vaught, John and Dana, map amendment rezoning, PZ-17-2262. Requesting review and approval of a map amendment to rezone property addressed as 423 West 8th Avenue from RT Residential Two-Family to RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate.
The map amendment before you is located at 423 West 8th Avenue. The subject site is indicated by the hatch pattern on the map. The site is located on the southeast corner of West 8th Avenue and Southwest Street. Current zoning is RT Residential Two-Family. Requested zoning is RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate, which allows for up to 50 units per acre. The surrounding zoning districts are RT Residential Two-Family and RSS Residential Single Family Small Lot. There's also Office, Office PUD, and RT PUD in the area. This is a street view of the subject site, looking straight from the, from 8th Street to the south. The house is built in 1935 as a large single-family house. Additions have occurred over the years to bring the house to just under 3,000 square feet. In 1984, the Stillwater Domestic Violence Shelter was created on the site and included five bedrooms. The Stillwater Domestic Violence Shelter sold the property in 2012. The property now has eight bedrooms with four full baths and one half-bath and has been converted into three apartments. The only permit obtained for this conversion was a plumbing permit to add a bathroom to move and to move a sink. Fire safety issues may exist since there were no building permits issued and no inspections This is a view looking to the southwest. Three structures on the east side of the property are storage buildings. This view indicates how close the house is situated to the property line. The garage has been converted to a living space and there's no room to park cars on the property. The RMI zoning is compatible with the C3 Plan of High Density Residential. The structure was converted from a single-family residence use to three internal apartments. The current RT zoning allows for duplex. The RMI district was requested to allow for the number of units per acre. And no parking is required on the premises. I'll be happy to try and answer questions.
Can you go back to the, what is located on both, what is the zoning located on both sides of this property?
Both sides. Let's see, to the, well, actually to the east is RT, because there's a, you could see the, well, you can't really. There's a house to the, to the left of that photo.
That's a duplex?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
To the north and south is also RT. And across west is RSS, the Residential Small Lot Single Family.
And it's the church right to the north?
Yes.
So this area is currently surrounded by RT zoning. And the current zoning is RT?
Correct.
And because they've already built the building with three apartments in it with no parking, they want us to change the zoning to make it conforming? Am I getting this correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Would it even conform exactly if it were rezoned? I'm looking at the minimum lot size requirements for RMI, and it's significantly smaller than that.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, I believe the site right now is, what, about 4,600 square feet? Something like that? Yes.
Forty-eight?
Yeah.
Forty-nine?
Yeah.
And it's 15,000 required for minimum lot size for RMI?
Correct.
But it's already zoned RT and that's a 7,500 square foot, so it's not conforming currently.
Right. Correct. Yeah. A duplex would, would fit, obviously, within the zoning, the current zoning.
But it's still too small a lot for it.
Correct. Yeah.
Other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes.
We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the item, please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name's John Vaught, and I'm the current owner of the property. And just a quick history, we bought the property. It was sold to us as three apartments, three incomes, three sets of keys, three outbuildings. We had no reason to believe that we were not conforming or the property was not conforming. So then we got a notice from the city, probably a month or two after, after we purchased it, and basically let us know that this was a problem. So we immediately evicted the upstairs tenant to get it down to, if you look at the property straight on, there's a left and a right and an upstairs, basically, is how it's divided up. And the doorways and so forth are built like it was always been that way, looked to me like, but I don't know what happened over time. But anyway, three apartments, so the upstairs person was, at that time, didn't have a vehicle. The one on the left, it was an individual person, had no vehicle. And then the people on the right did, so there is a double driveway there that works fine under this situation. So we thought we were fine. Parking wasn't a problem. So then we did realize over time, if it is, we could always add another driveway maybe, without getting advice from everything, you know, from the city and so forth. So anyway, at the end of the day, here we are, not in compliance. So I, I want to be in compliance. I want to try to figure out what, what we can do to make it work without having to totally remodel the entire property, so. I guess that's why I'm here. I've met with city and they've advised us that maybe we can look at this process. There's a couple of other options that aren't really good ones, which is going back and suing realtors and people we bought it from and so forth. And if I can avoid all that, it would sure be nice. So that's, that's why we're here, is trying, we're trying to zone it into what we think is the use, and the use has been for quite some time. I don't really know much more to say about it than that, but I am for the, trying to, trying to resolve the problem.
Thank you very much.
John Vaught, 5016 Woodland Drive, Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the item? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item? All right. Then I will close the public hearing and ask for staff alternatives.
I do have one quick question, if that's okay, Chair?
Of course.
I guess this isn't considered a legal non-conforming use because of the fact that a permit wasn't pulled by some previous owner. Is that the gist of this?
Well, it's, that's probably one good way to look at it, but based upon the, say, bulk standards, some of the setback requirements and stuff like that and lot sizes, it's a legally non-conforming use the way it sits right now. The use, I guess you could, well...
If it's a legally non-conforming use, then we shouldn't be here. It should be...
Confused.
So we're confused up here if you use that terminology in front of me.
Okay. The person that brought, bought the property from Domestic Violence, he's the one that changed it into the three apartments. Domestic Violence changed it from a five-bedroom house to an eight-bedroom, or I'm sorry, from a three-bedroom to a five-bedroom. And then I guess the, this new owner, the one that bought it from Domestic Violence, changed it into eight-bedroom. I don't know how the eight bedrooms came about. But anyway, they illegally changed it into three apartments because they did not get a building permit to do so. We don't know if there's been structural walls torn down. We don't know if firewalls have been installed. You know, no inspections have happened. And they, and by law, they have to provide the parking off-street on the property. And the site, where they park right now is across the sidewalk, which is against law. So there are several things going on here. I would not call it legally non-conforming because we, the zoning is only RT. So, and that's what brought about the, the request, is because you cannot have the three apartments in an RT.
What triggered this? I mean, why, why was it just not caught and not caught a long time ago?
It was kind of funny. We have a staff member that drives by the property. He saw the property for sale and it was for sale for, as three apartments. And so that kind of set off what happened. We talked to the, the owner at that time that was trying to sell it, and he was advised that he probably should not advertise it as three apartments because it was illegal, you know? But that's how he sold it. Anyway, that's how it came about. And then when we saw that the new owner was advertising it as three apartments, it was turned into code enforcement. So that's how it all started and came about.
Right. And so basically, Mr. Vaught's just trying to do the right thing and get it conforming is, is kind of what I see here, I guess. But anyway, okay.
Okay. Any other questions about it?
Say it is rezoned to RMI, is there still a parking problem?
Yes. Parking problem, firewalls, construction, all of those are still problems that will be taken care of, even if you, no matter if you change it, don't change it or change it. So, yeah, those are still issues that are gonna have to be taken care of. Anything else?
Speaking theoretically, one more question, sorry. Theoretically, if Mr. Vaught sold it again and somebody decided to tear down this building, could they then build something with many more units on this property or would it, would that not?
I think probably three, three or four is about the maximum that they could get on this property if it was rezoned to RMI. Because it's less than 5,000 square feet. The house itself is almost 3,000 square feet currently, so couldn't build too much more and provide the parking that is needed on the property.
Discussion.
Well, I mean, it sounds like Mr. Vaught's kind of caught in the, in the middle of a bad deal and, you know, if he's trying to, trying to make it work, I'm not opposed to giving RMI. Sounds like a very unique situation to me. I've never, in my 12 years, we've never had one of these anyway.
In a way, aren't we condoning that someone had illegally converted this to three bedrooms by doing this now?
I, I guess the only part of that is that wasn't Mr. Vaught. It was, it was somebody else.
Yeah, but that's a tort claim. That's a separate issue.
No, no, I get that.
Altogether. I mean, that's a different issue. So we're not gonna step back in and say, well, I'm sorry you bought the wrong property, but, okay, we'll let you go along with it.
If he's willing to do what it takes to bring it up, I guess he's gonna have to do something either way, it sounds like.
Yeah, he's gonna have to do something either way. So, I mean, it doesn't really, so what are we doing here?
What are we doing here? I have very mixed emotions about this. To me, I, I put my planning hat on and I say, golly, I'm, this is spot zoning. It's because someone in the past did something wrong and now we have a new landowner. Why should we spot zone? And, and will this have negative future context that I don't know of about, I can't think of at the present time? But then I go back to say, well, it's a, it's a small lot and, and he got caught and lied to. And, and under my understanding of the zoning, if somebody tears this down, they can't build a 50-story complex. They can essentially build a three or four apartment or almost exactly what I've got. And he's gotta go back in there and do work for parking and structural stuff. So I just, the, the, the one, the one option that he's got if we don't pass the zoning is, he's gotta go in there, modify it where, where he has a, he makes it into a duplex. You know, we can still have the eight bedrooms, but you have a door that comes into one of the areas and then goes up to the second floor. And he could make it a duplex with still eight bedrooms. So to me, that is not a substantial cost. So I'm leaning towards denying this request and denying the spot zoning.
No, sir, it's not.
The, Mr. Chairman, I have no objection to allowing him to come up and, and speak for a moment if you would, so let that occur.
Sir, if you'd like.
And I don't want to drag out with a long speech, but across the street is a church, across the street north. The church owns, there is a house next door to it, like, like you saw in the picture, but it wasn't really there, but it was, there is one. And there's half a block of empty lot next to that. Well, the church owns that, that block of empty lot. And the church has, the, the house next door, it's, it's a handicapped gal lives in it and she is allowed to live there for her life. And, and once that changes, then that property goes to the church. So I think all this is, is gonna be used toward that down the road. So I don't know if that helps. The zoning, it's, you know, two, two, two different directions. I think it's zoned similar to what we are. Okay, now back to the house. The house is, the egress and the ingress and so forth, all those things are fine. Structure of the house is okay. The footprint of the house hasn't changed since day one. They just went in there and I think made some bedrooms out of the garage. They just went in there and I think made some bedrooms out of the garage is what I think must have happened. I, I wasn't even, but the footprint of the house hasn't changed since day one. Just wanted to clear that up.
Another discussion?
Well, again, I, I just think that if we deny the request, we're somewhat penalizing someone for trying to do the right thing. I guess it's the way I kind of see it in, in my head. You're trying to make the, trying to make a bad situation to conform. And if he's willing to put those dollars in it to do so, it's possible, you know? But so, but I, I see Mike's point of view too, so.
I will make a motion that we find the map amendment is not an appropriate use of a property based upon the impacts of surrounding vicinity and do not recommend that the city council approve the map amendment. Mr. Chairman, I believe that, I did not get a second on that.
Not a second. Did not hear one.
Dusty, you want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the proposal of the commissioner and, sorry. That's passed. The result of vote, the motion passes three to one. The next item for business is approval of meeting summary for discussion and possible action. The corrected meeting summary of May 16th and regular me, can I do them together? And regular meeting summary of the 7th?
Move for...
No, have to do them separate. All right. Sorry. I'm sorry about that. I have to do them separate. So the corrected of May 16th.
I do have one quick question. Is it just the highlighted items that were corrected?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the amended minutes. The motion passes four to zero. We'll now have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 7th, 2017.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the November 7th regular meeting. The motion passes four to zero. Next planning commission meeting is December 19th, 2017.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving seconded to adjourn. Thank you very much.